Good morning. We will call the August 1st, 2023 City Council Meeting to Order and ask Councilman McKelvey to lead his invocation and pledge. If you will, please stand.
Please pray with me. God our Father, we say thanks for Jackson, Tennessee. We love this place and we love that you shared it with us. Lord, we ask that you bless all citizens of Jackson because at the end of the day, we are all your children. And Lord, a special blessing upon our city workers, our emergency services while they're out there fixing our city and protecting us. We ask that you protect them, you keep them safe and healthy in all that they do. Lord, we invite you into this room today. We ask that you bless us, that you inspire us, and that you lead us to make decisions that will be best for the city of Jackson and your wonderful creation. We ask that you provide us with opportunities to lead and serve in the spirit of your Son Jesus, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty, justice, and justice for all.
Item three is roll call and I'll keep you all council members present except for Councilman Dodd. And then item four is approval of minutes from the July 6th, 2023 City Council Meeting. And those are the minutes were sent out to you all in emails. There'll be no additions or corrections. It'll be approved as read. Proclamation recognition, we have none today. Item six, invitation for public comments. And we have three that have signed up. We'll start out with going this order, Robert Curlin speaking on item three, first reading. Lee Godfrey speaking on one of the items. And then Marty Corcel speaking on Animal Care Center.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Curlin. I live at 1325 Campbell Freeway. I'm sorry, Campbell Street. This anti-litter code recommendation is a great start, but hardly ready for a vote. In short, it treats our littering problem as if it only comes from moving vehicles and does nothing to reverse a rampant disregard of unenforced ordinances already in place. Living on Campbell, we deal with a constant dump of fast food, trash, beer and liquor bottles, plastic drink containers, jumbo soda and coffee cups, cigarette packages and butts, grocery bags, both emptied and filled. And I've yet to figure out how dirty diapers can be changed and thrown out a moving car window, but apparently it's possible and has happened more than once. In this proposal, the registered vehicle owner is prima facie assumed to be responsible and gets fined. Sure, the person filing the report may have to go in and testify if, and it's a big if, there are any prosecutions resulting from the complaint. In execution, many of these will get thrown out because the owner of the vehicle provably may not have been in it at all, and the complainant most likely can't ID a passenger or a driver from a moving vehicle. And what's to stop someone from falsely reporting the vehicle owned by a person they simply want to harass? Besides enforcement issues, it also ignores cleanup responsibility. See, much of our street side trash is generated by people who don't even have cars but walk or ride bikes. The proposal does not even address pedestrians. How does that help me with people on foot who constantly take a shortcut by trespassing across my posted yard and throwing down their trash as they go? We deal with this daily. Moreover, the proposal completely ignores our biggest community I saw, outdated political campaign signs, garage yard sale signs, and special event signs, along with ever increasing illegal scam signs. Campaign ordinances prevent candidate signs from going up more than 45 days before an election, and they're to be taken down within 48 hours of the election itself. Over the past few elections, that 45 days before the election has come to be interpreted as from the first day of early voting, so that junk is already out more than a month earlier than the original intent of the ordinance. Today marks 13 weeks or three months since the city election and seven weeks since the mayoral runoff. We're several months past that 48 hours after the election deadline to remove campaign signs, yet hundreds of signs still clutter our community all over from both elections. Perhaps using the methods in this recommended change, it should be considered prima facie evidence that the person's name or campaign or the sign is responsible for it, or the owner of the address on the outdated garage or yard sale sign, or the nonprofit for its fundraising event that was held back in March. To be fair, several but not all of these signs are perched in avid supporters' yards on private property. Freedom of speech aside, it would seem we should take this opportunity to address illegal and outdated campaign signs for exactly what they are, both a nuisance and trash. Unenforced regulations are already in place, so why are we micro focusing on ways to find only certain people for littering, vehicle owners, while ignoring the rest?
Three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Lee Godfrey.
Good morning. I'm Lee, real estate broker here for Mr. Chuck Clark for Nolan Park. And I'm just simply here to let you folks know that we desperately need this property rezoned. We've had it for sale for seven or eight years and unsuccessful in being able to sell it because it's on OC, which is Office Center. And we're applying to get it rezoned to B5 so we can open the park up to businesses which we have not been able to. We've had a lot of interest and a lot of people interested in buying these lots in this park. It's located at the intersection of Old Humboldt Road and the bypass right across the street from Charles Patterson, the attorney's office. And we're just completely hamstrung with this OC zone. So I'm just here to support Mr. Clark and let you folks know that we desperately need this property rezoned. And we've requested a B5, and I understand that the planning commission is in favor of it. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but that's really all I need to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. Next up, we have Mrs. Corcel.
A smile ladder. She's scared.
Hmm?
A smile ladder.
Oh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have no planned remarks. I had not planned to get up before this August body. I'm here on behalf of the Pet Care Center. It has been neglected for years and years and years and years. They're God's best creation and his best gift to us, and we are not taking care of them. We need to either say we are not going to take care of them and euthanize everything that comes in, or we need to take care of them. We need to step up. We need to build a new building, and we need to do it now. It's been in the works for years, and things happen, and things lay on people's desks and out of sight, out of mind. Well, the people who work with these precious babies are not out of sight, out of mind. I see them every time I go out there. I sweat with them. There's no air conditioning where the dogs are. That's inhumane. We need to do it. We need to do it now. And I thank you for any help that you can give us. And please don't let them suffer any longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment section. Then we'll move on to first reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment, local match for airways, phases one and two, the amount of $154,000.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The city was previously awarded some grant funding for the improvements of Airways Boulevard, Phase One and Two. That happened some time ago. More recently, the city was informed or authorized by TDOT to that we were ready to move forward with the environmental and the design stages. Historically, the grants, by the way, overall are an 80/20 grant. Cities responsible for 20% match. However, historically, the environmental and the design part of the work has been funded 100% by the local municipality. The good news is, this time, the state apparently had some remaining COVID funds, and they have elected to contribute 222,000 of their funding to the environmental and design part of the project, leaving the city with $154,000 match for this part of the project. So this would be, this budget amendment would approve the appropriation for that match, and it would be coming from our fund balance, our prior year fund balance, or our reserves for capital.
Thank you. Bobby, reminder for the Phase One and Two for those airways is the rebuild from Highland to Hollywood. It's a Phase One and Two grant. We got Phase One takes us to Lafayette on airways, and then Phase Two takes us to Hollywood. We found out last month, I believe, that we were awarded Phase Three, which takes us to State Street. And this fall, we'll be applying for Phase Four, which will take us all the way to the bypass. So it's the goal of rebuilding airways from Highland to the bypass. All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Is this 80/20 on all these phases after the initial design?
Yes, it's the same grant, same transportation.
I'm moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two, proposed budget amendment for insurance recovery, traffic signalization, the amount of $8,027.
We did have damage incurred to some of our traffic signals. And of course, we're insured. We go through the insurance process. In this particular case, we recovered $8,027. And what this budget amendment would do would appropriate that $8,000 for the repair of the equipment.
Any questions from council?
If you know, I'm just curious. Do you know how the highway was damaged? Was it accident or weather?
I think it's weather, believe it was.
Yeah, I'm really not. I'm really not sure. Someone here may flood.
Flooding.
Okay, flooding.
That was to the box, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Item three is proposal to amend Title 17 to add a new chapter four anti-litter code. Add Ms. Luna and Ms. Wade up here. Oh, and Mr. Cobb.
Robert Trumps, this morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Council. The Code Committee has been hard at work again. This time, we are presenting for your review a proposed anti-litter code, which would be a new chapter four to Title 17. Now, when we were approached by Danielle Wade, the City Beautiful Coordinator, we noticed that there's not a single part of our code that really deals with litter. So we are, I'm going to let Danielle speak first, what she asked us to do.
Basically, going through the municipal codes we already have, I noticed that most of the codes as it relates to litter by illegal dumping were within the housing codes and a few ordinances within H&amp;S. We got together and went through looking at other cities that actually have litter codes and tried to come up with something that works best for Jackson. And it's a starting point for trying to tackle this issue.
One of the things that we wanted to do was to look at it from a citizen's point of view. If I'm a citizen, I need to know what is a violation of the code. I also need to know what I can do if I need to report. So that's what we've added in there. The second thing, if I'm a police officer, I need to know what it is that's a violation and how to prosecute it. And then if I'm the court, I need to know what it is that is proof of a violation of the litter code. So I want to bring up some answers to Mr. Curlin's good questions first. He mentioned that there's nothing in the code that deals with cleanup. It's actually in 17409, the proposed part of the code. You'll see in there that the, the word abatement. The word abatement means that a city officer, like the code enforcer or the court, can require a citizen who has violated the code to abate it and clean it up. That's a very important part of this new section. And if they don't, then of course there's a fine for that. And also, the city can go in and clean it up if the, if within 48 hours, the citizen hasn't done his appropriate abatement. That's very important. Mr. Curlin also brought up, what if you're not driving? What if you're just walking and you do it? Well, that's in Section 17402. That's addressed there. No littering, dumping, throwing trash. Doesn't matter if you're in a car or not. The section that deals with the cars is important because we do see trucks that have items that fly off the top, or we see cars that, you know, throw items out the window as they're driving by. But we have two different sections for that. About the signs, one of the longest sections of our code deals with signs. It's already in there. The Code Committee looked extensively at our sign ordinance and felt like that everything dealing with signs was already in there. That's not a matter of putting into the code. It's just a matter of enforcing it. So the signs are dealt with in a different section of the code. And then lastly, you'll know this, that we have a property maintenance code. The property maintenance code already deals with people's property, what you can have on your own property and the violations therefore. So this litter ordinance takes everything else, right, beside the sign code, beside the property maintenance of your own property. And it deals with what if somebody dumps on city property, litters on city property? What if someone litters on someone else's property? That's what this code, this part of the code will handle. So if I may point out a couple of things I think you may have questions about. In 17401 is the definition of litter. It covers everything that anybody could throw out. We went, as Danielle said, we went to every code in the state that had a litter provision like this. And this is the best definition that we could come up with. It is all inclusive. Okay, under 17402, this is the one I was speaking about, that you don't have to be driving, any kind of throwing out, dumping, depositing, either on public property or on private property, if you do it on someone else's private property. And I think that's what Danielle and others at the city have seen, is that we have people or entities that own property that are not local. Citizens know that. They go there and they dump tires and other waste there, and yet we can't find the owner of the property. So this particular section of the code would handle that. You cannot dump or litter on someone else's property, or you could be found in violation. The 403 is the one that deals with litter from vehicles. Again, it is either on public or private property. This one applies. 404, now, the prima facia evidence just means that if we come to court, if the city comes to court and Mr. Cobb will prosecute those in E Court or in City Court, when he comes to court, prima facia evidence means that we've, the city has met its burden. If we show that it was done from a vehicle, then we have evidence that it was done from a vehicle. Maybe someone took a photo of it. Maybe the police officer saw it. Maybe we have a witness who can testify under oath that it was done from a vehicle. Then that is the prima facia evidence that the driver of that vehicle did it. Okay. Again, we put school bus in here, and I know that probably caught your attention, but we felt like it was not fair for a school bus driver to be cited for a child on his school bus throwing out. That would not be prima facia evidence. But every other driver of a vehicle, when someone throws out, that would be prima facia. Now, what does that mean? It means that when you come to court and you're before the judge, you can certainly say, for example, if I'm driving my car and Mr. Cobb is sitting in the backseat and he throws out something, then I can come to court and I can say, Judge, it wasn't me. I had no idea. I didn't give him the authority to do it. Mr. Cobb was sitting in the backseat and he did it. So I can rebut that prima facia evidence. Then it's up to the court to decide who should be cited, me or Mr. Cobb. 17405 is something we picked up from several other city codes across the state. And that is, if you've got your utility bill or, you know, you're dumping your trash and your name is all in that trash, then that can be, that is prima facia evidence. Again, it can be rebutted by the person who's brought into court, but it's prima facia evidence that you are the one who dumped that trash. 17406 talks about reporting. Now, any person, you don't have to be from Jackson or not from Jackson, any person, any citizen can, who witnesses this, can come forth and say to the city, I saw it. I have a picture of it. Of course, we'd love for the citizens to have a photo if they catch them or a photo of the driver's license or the driver's plate on the car. That would be very helpful if citizens were able to do that. Again, this is prima facia evidence. If we have their registration number and we have testimony or a photo or both, then that's pretty good evidence to the court that this person did that. And again, they're able to rebut it. Here's the kicker. In 406, the person who does come forth as a witness is required to be a witness in court, and the city would subpoena them. And so we wanted the citizens to know that, that we need you to come to court. It's not enough that you just tell us that you saw it. We need you to tell the judge as well. 407, this tells us who can prosecute it. It can be prosecuted by the city, by a police officer. Mr. Cobb, again, would take that into court on behalf of the city. Or a private citizen. For example, if somebody keeps dumping on my property and the police have not, you know, been made aware of that, I can come to the city and I can, and ask for them to issue a summons to the person that I believe is doing it, that I've caught maybe with a photo doing that. So I'm the person. As a private citizen, I can make the initial charge. And then if the city feels like that there's enough evidence there, then the city will pick that up and prosecute that. Then under 408, this, I'm sure probably some of you new council people will have a question about this. And Mr. McKelvey always has a question about this particular thing, but why is it just $50? Why can't it be more? And again, it's a misdemeanor if someone violates a section of this code. And then the $50 a day is the max that the city can find. And the reason for that is the state law, and it comes really from the Tennessee Constitution, which says that without a jury of your peers, the max that can be, a person can be punished is $50. But it can be per day. So let's say that someone dumps a load of tires and it's been sitting there for several days, then it can be a $50 fine per day. And if the city eventually has to clean it up, then according to that last section of this code, the city can charge that dumper, that litterer, for the total cleanup, including the attorney's fees that are incurred and having to bring the matter to court. So I think the last thing that's important is the term public nuisance. A public nuisance is a legal term, which means that you have, you have created something that is in violation and it must be abated. A public nuisance necessarily allows the city or the court to say, you must abate it. You must stop it. Okay. So I'm happy to address any questions as well as Mr. Cobb and Ms. Wade.
Any questions from council?
Yes, I have a few. Regarding the ordinance, 17402, I've been reading that, and it talks about no person should dump, deposit, or whatever on any public parkway, pathway, street, road, public parks, a recreation area, or other public property. But it does not include private property in that particular section. Now, private property is included in 403, 405, 406, and 407, but it's not in 402. Should it not also be in 402 as well?
It very well could be. It very well could be. And we could certainly make an amendment to add that in there on any private or public property. And we looked at that and had the same question that you just addressed, Councilman Donnell. It is addressed in other sections that you can't throw on or maintain a nuisance on someone else's private property. But we certainly could have, you know, someone could make a motion to make it, to amend that to include private property as well.
Okay, I'll make that when the time comes. Also regarding the statute, I'm glad you've done this. I really do appreciate it. Something needs to be done about it. It will have, but be difficult to enforce because people won't, probably will not have their camera out and anticipate somebody's about to litter to take the picture. So that probably will not happen. But at any rate, that's why cameras are so important, that we have cameras and put cameras up. There are three in my district right now, and that we need to have these cameras so we can capture people actually doing their littering and enforce the law on here. So I would hope that we would strive to get cameras to put up so that we can enforce it because it really is a difficult problem in Jackson.
And again, to your point, I think education's going to be really important to whatever version of the, this code that the council passes, to show the citizens how much we need their help. And when they see something, we need them to do something.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, exactly what is different from where we are today? For right today, Lewis and I going down the road, and he throws something out, can I not have him arrested?
Well, Lewis. You know, as much as we would all like for that to happen. To answer your question, seriously, to answer your question, basically, we look through the code, and other than thou shalt not litter, I mean, the code was pretty empty.
There was no teeth. Really, really no prosecution.
Right. We, it was something that was needed. And so this is one that has teeth, that we think, the most teeth that we could put in it.
The criminal code has littering penalties, but all but one are fines only. I don't think there's any jail time. It's got to be malicious littering or something like that is third or fourth level. And that's repeat offenses or large amounts of trash. But we don't enforce those. I mean, we, the environmental court, that has to be enforced by the Attorney General if it is a criminal sanction.
All right, any other questions?
One other question I want to ask you. I have noticed there are some signs in Jackson right now that says no dumping, and then it says $200 fine. But I heard you say a minute ago that you can only do 50. So what's the, that caught me there?
If the District Attorney General wants to pursue it, they have a lot greater leverage than we do. We have a hammer, but it's a $50 a day hammer. And he's got several layers of enforcement and consequences that we don't have.
And that would be brought in Circuit Court, Chancery Court, which has the ability to have a jury if the defendant so chooses.
All right. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from council?
Mayor, I want to do my, make a motion for my amendment at the appropriate time, so you let me know when that is.
All right. Is there a motion for the?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Now, Councilman, you got a motion to amend it?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move that 17402 include a provision that private property to be included in the description of places where persons cannot dump as well.
Second that.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to amend 402 to include private property as well as public property. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, now we have the motion as amended. All right, any further discussion from council? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, thank you. Lewis, they're going to be looking for you to throw you in jail, just to let you know.
I'm used to it.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located in Nolan Cove from OCFH, Office Center Flood Hazard District, to B5FH, Highway Business Flood Hazard District, comprising 27.7 acres, more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This item was presented to the planning commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. This property is located adjacent to B5 property, so it's considered a logical extension of that B5 zone. So again, we are supporting that from the planning side of things.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You're going to abstain? Okay, all right. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one, abstaining.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1049 through 1145 White Hall Street from AO Agricultural Open District to B5 Highway Business District to I2 Light Industrial District, comprising 18.1 acres, more or less.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. JJ Couples is an industrial use that's located in this area. Over time, they have bought other tracts of land that adjoin them, and they're just wanting to consolidate their property under one zoning scheme.
Any questions from council? Motion, we accept.
Motion, we accept.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item six, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance to the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article 6 Regulations Applying to a Specific to Several or to All Districts, Section 2, Fences, Walls, and Hedges.
All right, so this was presented to the Planning Commission and they are recommending approval of it to you. This was something that we brought to the Planning Commission because of multiple instances where we were dealing with corner lots. And as you know, corner lots are different in that they have two frontages, a principal front and a secondary front. And they're usually at the intersection of streets. So the provision was that you couldn't have a fence in the secondary front because it could block somebody's vision across the front yard of the property. And so wouldn't be able, wouldn't be able to see cars coming from either direction. So what we did is we were bringing this amendment because there are many, many instances where that's not a problem. You could have a fence within the secondary front and not block your vision across the property and be able to see cars that are coming down the street. So, so basically, that's the wording that's in the, in the text amendment. It's saying that you could, and there are instances where the planning staff can approve fences in the secondary front where it's not impeding vision. But in those cases where it would, we'll still prohibit them.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion.
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 Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item seven is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance to the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article 5, Specific District Regulations, Section 23, PRD, Planned Residential Development District.
This text amendment was brought to the Planning Commission. And again, this is an effort on our part to, to review our zoning ordinance and make changes because our zoning ordinance started, the one we've currently using, started in the late 60s. And it's been amended over time. So there's some things that, that have to be updated because they're outdated based on the way the development was, was developed then and where, the way it is now. So PRD is one of those provisions. It's planned residential development. It allows you some flexibility on the way you develop property. But it was created during a time when density wasn't an issue, where you had plenty of land. And so it had a 40% open space lay aside. So you can imagine if, if you bought a piece of property and you bought 10 acres and, and we said, okay, you bought 10 acres and you paid money for 10 acres, but four acres of it has to remain open. It makes it very difficult to develop, not to mention it creates sprawl because it requires you to buy more property to meet the provision. So, so basically, what this does is it allows, it reduces that open space requirement to 20%, which is in, runs in concert with our landscaping provisions, which are 20% green space. It also adjusted some of the density requirements on RS2, which is a newer residential class. And it, it determines how many units you can have per acre. But the reason that prompted this is because of the crossings, which y'all have all heard about this new residential development that'll be occurring out north along Ashport Road. The PRD will be a zoning class that they'll use to develop that property with this master plan that they're developing. And the current PRD regulations would not prohibit, would prohibit some of the things they're wanting to do. And so we're just aligning our ordinance with the way development is done today.
All right, any questions from council?
I'm gonna abstain from this one too, just like the other one. With my line of business, I don't want it to bring up any type of ethical violation later on, so abstaining from it.
Councilmember Holden. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one, abstain.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Second reading, item one is consideration of an ordinance to change the name of South Day Street to Slack Street.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is consideration of changes to Title 1, Chapter 2, Public Comments.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
You got a new business, item one is consideration of a street acceptance request for Windchase, Section 18.
I thought I would give you a little bit of understanding about the process for those that are new to street acceptance. Street acceptance, when it comes to subdivisions, occurs after the improvements have been done. In other words, the streets are built to final surface. At the time that they're, the acceptance is considered, we send out someone to inspect the street to make sure everything has been done. Then we bring it to you. Once you accept it, the developer puts forth a warranty security, which we hold. And during the first year that you have that street, the developer is responsible for any failures that occur during that year. Now, once the year is completed, that maintenance security is released and the city then takes responsibility from that point on. So you don't see them until everything is done. And also, with the first year, you get a warranty. So just wanted you to understand that, that we don't bring it to you until those things are all done and the street's been inspected and made sure that it meets our standards so that we don't end up with a substandard street that we're gonna have problems with over time.
Thank you, Stan. Any questions from council on that? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
Item two is consideration of a contract with Kimberly Horn to provide as needed engineering and planning services.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
As we talked about on Thursday, this is gonna be a stopgap, one of the many stopgaps that we're gonna do until we hire a full-time city engineer. Next month, we'll be back with more.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion. Passed eight to zero.
Item three is consideration of a contract with McCurdy Sod Farms for Bermuda sod.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
Bids were taken for sod. This is for Bermuda, Bermuda sod. This is for different quantities, both delivered and unloaded on site. This will be mainly used by a Sportsplex. They now do their installation in-house. Two bids were received. It's a recommendation of the Sportsplex and Purchasing Department toward this bid to McCurdy Sod Farms LLC as best bid. The bid costs are broken down in your packet as the following. Less than a truckload will be $3.30 per square yard. Truckload quantities will be $2.80 per square yard. And this will be a one-year agreement. And the city will have the right to four one-year options to renew.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Who's the approval?
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item four is consideration of a contract with MSB Construction for Sportsplex Shade Structures.
So bids were received for Sportsplex Shade Structures. This is for the labor and material for installation of shade structures at different fields at the Sportsplex. Three bids were received. It's a recommendation of the Sportsplex and the Purchasing Department toward this bid to MSB Construction as best bid. Pricing per the four different sized structures are listed in your packet.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, item five is consideration of a contract with Allison Contracting Company for TR White Sportsplex Exterior Entrance Upgrades.
So bids were received for TR White Sportsplex Exterior Entrance Upgrades. These upgrades are for the front entry wall store front area. Two bids were received. It's a recommendation of the Parks and Rec Department and Purchasing toward this bid to Allison Contracting Company as best bid. This bid is received at a cost of $142,800.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second? Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item six, consideration of an A&E contract with Vendetta Hardware Architecture for the Jackson Animal Care Center.
So this is a professional services contract with BNH Architecture. BHA and its consultants will produce a set of bid documents for the completion of the Jackson Animal Care Center, which is located at 241 Canal Cove Drive. The scope of work consists of modifying the original bid documents dated back from 2018 to order, in order to identify the remaining portion of the project to be constructed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion from council?
Okay, this is to complete the project started back in 2008?
2018.
2018, sorry.
Yes, sir.
And the funding for that, at that time, was that gonna be any public funding? I mean, private funding?
Some was involved.
Yeah, there was some.
I think that's correct, yes.
I think from the start of the, the project, what was promised and what was delivered were a little different.
Okay, so, all right.
This one, this one will be ARPA, yeah.
All right, now, so what's the total cost gonna be for the building?
We don't know yet.
We won't know yet until the A&E fish.
Okay, we got 1.5 budget right now coming from COVID funds.
Yes, yes.
And so a lot of we don't know.
That's correct.
Estimate the completion at the time. We, just estimation from another A&E was roughly $8,900,000. So we put in 1.5 just for any over, just for that. We have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to one, abstain.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Item seven is consideration of committee and board appointments. Jackson Housing Authority, appointment of Beth Kaufman.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Planning Commission, the appointment of Andrew Long.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second? In a second? Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Audit Committee, the appointment of Kristy Williams, Kimberly Jones, John Huey, and Gary Jenkins.
So moved.
Have a motion?[1661.02]